Good evening, everyone. It's February 15th, 2022. Time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council. It is 6:00 p.m. We're going to begin this meeting like we do each of our meetings with the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. And tonight, Councilman Alexander is going to lead us in the prayer and in the pledge. So if you would stand with me, please.
Let every heart pray. In terms of grace of God, once again, we come with Thanksgiving in our hearts, but yet we come with sad hearts. We pray for all the bereaved families everywhere, especially Linda Goodman, her family. I pray of God that you bless her children in a special way. Sister Poe, in Nolanville, I pray of God for her family as well. The Lord be the merciful this meeting. Let everything we say and do be pleasing your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray in every heart sad. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of your God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll thank you, Councilman Alexander. Ms. Kitchell, if you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennel.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Here.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Here.
May we have a quorum?
Thank you. Now, council, before you, you have the minutes from the October 26th, 2021 special called City Council Meeting and the February 1st, 2022.
I can.
City Council Meeting. I have a motion by Councilman Overton to approve both, seconded by Councilman Alexander. Are there any suggestions or corrections or additions suggested?
I was just wondering why it was so long to get here. I didn't remember what happened on October 26th.
Well, Ms. Kitchell may wish to address, but I think.
That was a special call meeting after a council meeting, and somehow it got missed. I didn't put it on the agenda. So cleaning up the other day, I was making sure I had everything approved.
Thank you.
And I found those, and so we've got them on the agenda tonight. So that's the story.
And you were like, oh, no, right?
Right.
So that's why. Are there any corrections, additions, requests? Seeing none, all in favor of approving both sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. The minutes are approved unanimously. We're going to move on now to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that anyone can come forward and speak to any item that is on the evening's published agenda. There's also a time at the end of the meeting where you can speak to anything that's not on the agenda. So right now, if you'd like to speak to an item that's on this evening's agenda, we ask that you come forward to the podium, introduce yourself, give us your address, and you'll have five minutes to speak. So with that, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Zinser. I reside at 914 Farrington Way here in Gallatin, been a Gallatin resident since October of 1977. I'm also the president of the Zinser Law Firm with offices in Gallatin as well. I'm here tonight because I learned that proposal under consideration to change your liquor law ordinance. In 2014, I purchased the Copper Still Wine and Spirits here in Gallatin. I was motivated in large part by the fact that the number of licensees at that time was limited to seven and that it wouldn't grow to eight until the population grew a certain amount. I forget the exact number. But that was a substantial motivation to me to make that investment. These are small businesses. If anybody's ever run a liquor store, this was my first, one of the things I learned is it's a fun business. You get to know a lot of people in the community, but they're not hugely profitable businesses. They're not as profitable as a lot of people think. But they're small businesses. They're local businesses. And when the pandemic hit, we stayed open. Thank goodness, we were considered an essential business. But all of these seven liquor stores powered on. There came a time in 2020 that I sold the Copper Still Wine and Spirits. And I can tell you that the potential buyers were also motivated by the fact that a limit on the number of licensees, which induced them to pay my asking price. And so I think that while I don't have a dog in the race anymore, I'm a big proponent of trying to support local small businesses. I think that it would be akin to this government, you know, taking property from these small business owners without compensation because they have made investments. I know that the, I don't know the owner of Red Carpet, but they just opened a new store and judging by the size of it and the inventory, they made a substantial investment. And I'm sure that investment was based in part by the fact that, that limitation. So I just wanted to appear, give you my thoughts on that. And I think that we should do everything we can to support the local businesses. And thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Zinser.
Hello. My name's William P. Flowers. I reside at 350 East Main Street here in Gallatin. Been a resident since the mid-'80s. I too worked at the Copper Still and I worked on the ordinance that currently stands when the original owner made the investment in the community to build a different type of store and offer a different atmosphere and experience for customers. With the existing stores we have in town currently, I believe we've got a great mix. We've got Gallatin Liquor, which is on the square. It's been there, or right off the square. It's been there for many years, very traditional, old school, the type of liquor store that our grandfathers used to shop in. We've got the Copper Still, which tends to be more of a boutique experience. Red Carpet has just opened a nice new store as everyone spoke about the investment they've made in the community. I think that what most people don't understand is it's kind of like changing the rules of the game, mid-game, for a lot of these business owners. They've already lost the income that they made off of cashing checks, which was a large portion of the profits that they made. And I believe they've lost that sometime in the '80s or '90s possibly. They've lost wine sales to the grocery stores. I was not necessarily in favor of that, but I tend to buy wine on Sunday in the grocery store now. So I agree with the changes that have come. I don't think that we need more stores at this point. I would not be opposed to seeing more stores when the population would require it. And I think that we have a great protection in the ordinance. I like the fact that the owner of the liquor store has to live within three miles of Gallatin city limits. If we change that, we could be opening up to stores like Total Wine. These are going to be, stores are not locally owned and could potentially put many of our stores out of business. So I would like for you to consider all those. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers. Is there anyone else who would like to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items this evening? I've seen no one. I'll declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed and move on now to Mayor's comments. And somewhere I did have some. Yes, just a few things. I do want to mention again that through February, the Stay Warm Shelter will continue at 260 East Winchester every Friday night through the end of February, 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Also want to mention to you all, because there are several blood drives coming up, if you are able to donate blood, I certainly would encourage you to. There is one on the 22nd at NHC Place that happens from 9:00 till 3:00. There's one on the 24th at the Civic Center from 11:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. And then there is one on March 3rd from 1:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. I have not actually heard a recent update on the status of blood availability right now in middle Tennessee, but judging by these number of drives, they must be really trying to get donations. So I would ask that you consider that. Want to mention that we do have a longtime Gallatin City employee who's retiring soon. She's actually hanging in here with us tonight. Elaine Hudson is having a retirement party on the 22nd of February. And since you're here tonight, Ms. Hudson, I just want to say thank you so very much. You leave big shoes to fill and lots of great stories and lots of great proof of your hard work and all the effort you've made. It can be seen throughout our park system. So thank you for all that you've done. And in her retirement party, I did mention, I think it's on the 22nd, at the Gallatin Civic Center. Do you know what time it is? It doesn't have the time on here.
1:00 to 3:00.
1:00 to 3:00. So I hope, council, you guys can attend that. The Good Morning at Gallatin, which is that monthly legislative update that the Chamber of Commerce sponsors, this happens on the 25th this month. It's Good Morning Gallatin. That's with Mayor Anthony Halt. And I believe you told me last week, Councilman Overton, that it's at the Hampton Inn, 7:30 a.m. There is an artifact show coming to the Civic Center on the 27th of February. And I think that is all that I will mention this evening. So that's all for Mayor's comments, and we will move on to the regular agenda. And the first item this evening on the regular agenda is second reading on the ordinance 02201-5. And for that, Vice Mayor Fennel is recognized.
Oh, I'm sorry. There we go. I'm sorry. This is an ordinance appropriating funds for the sale of recyclables in an amount of $16,378.26. Motion to approve.
Message by Vice Mayor Fennel, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion on this? It's second.
Is that just a line item? Is that how that?
Um, sorry. Sorry, that was my, that was my alarm on the last speaker. This is from our, from our sanitation department. When they, when they sell recyclables, that money has been allocated back to them because, remember, they are a department that, you know, tries to cover all of their costs so that that money.
Right. So that just comes, shows on their line item. Okay.
Yeah. So they, it is, I mean, it's, I guess, budgeted to come back to them revenue-wise, but because the funds are coming back to the city, then we have to send them specifically to.
Think Public Works.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Okay, this is second reading ordinance 02201-5. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number two is first reading on ordinance 02201-4. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning 57.50 acres. Parcels 8, parcel 9, parcel 11, and 11.02 from the Agricultural Residential District to R8 PRD Medium Density Residential Plan Residential Development District with a preliminary master development plan for Station Camp Creek located north of Long Hollow Pike and east of Big Station Camp Creek Boulevard, authorizing revision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Message by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton, opening the floor for discussion.
I think they've made some good changes.
One else? Any questions for Mr. McCord? Representative? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02201-4. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass first reading unanimously. Item two, sorry, item three is first reading on ordinance 02202-6, Vice Mayor Fennel.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 3, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 3, Beer Division 4, Regulations, Section 3-222, Restrictions on the Issuance of Beer Permits. Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennel. Second by Councilman Overton, opening the floor for discussion.
This is where we're taking the 250-foot away from the churches and we're allowing the beer to be sold next to the churches, pretty much opening it up.
That doesn't sound good. We're removing the distance regulations due to the difficulty in identifying where some of those locations might be and the constant changing of some of those locations.
That's correct. And also, we already have several places that have beer permits that were grandfathered in that are in violation of this. And as you know, if we were to be constitutionally attacked on this, as we've discussed earlier, that could cause us issues. So we are requesting that those limitations be removed.
Anyone else? This is first reading on ordinance 02202-6. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item four is first reading on ordinance 02202-8, Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance updating the purchasing policy. I so move.
Second. Message by Councilwoman George, second by Councilwoman Love. Any questions?
To me, it looked very comprehensive.
Yeah, I appreciate Ms. Nichols' work on this. This is all working towards keeping us, like, top of the top. Great job. So this is first reading on ordinance 02202-8. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass first reading unanimously. Item five is first reading on ordinance 02202-9. Vice Mayor Fennel, for this, you are recognized. I do believe that Ms. Haemecali has requested that we defer this because she feels like more work needs to happen. It's the will of this body.
Rather than read it, do I just motion to defer for two, two weeks?
Well, I think you said you needed, two weeks probably is not the entire, that entire division is going to need to be updated. When, we didn't have an ordinance on the agenda last week. And so when I went back to draft it, I did draft something that, as you requested. But in looking at the entire section as a whole, a lot of things need to change and be updated. For instance, the, the section that was just brought up that you have to live within three miles, the Supreme Court has said that's not constitutional. So that has to be removed. There are a lot of things that have to be removed. If you were to pass this, as you talked last week, Ms. Kitchell is going to need some time to get forms updated. I know that she's had at least three calls in the last week. And so that we're going to need a little bit of time to get everything up to speed.
And I, I would say for the public's benefit that you should just go ahead and read it and.
Okay.
The people are aware of what we're discussing, deferring.
This is an ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 3, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 3, Beer Division 4.
Wrong one.
Wrong ordinance. Ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter 3, Alcoholic Beverages, Article 2, Intoxicating Liquor, Division 2, Licenses and Inspections, Section 3-62, Limitation on Number of Retail License. Motion to approve. Going to defer it.
Affirm. Message to defer.
I was just going to see where it hit. Motion to defer.
Okay, motion to defer, second by Councilman Overton. All in favor of deferring, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is deferred. And do you want us to set a time on that or you will bring it back when you have it?
I doubt that I can get it done in two weeks because, as you will recall, I have one of my staff members that is going to be leaving the office on Friday. And we're going, so we're going to be down a staff member. And we're all going to be pitching into other things. So probably be not in two weeks, but probably be a month before we can have that back to you.
That's okay with this council. I would encourage you all to consider to talk to people in the community and figure out the nuances associated with what you're considering that aren't so visibly apparent on first glimpse. Because as I've delved into it, like I've learned from Mr. Zinser and Mr. Flowers and the Patel's, it's a lot more, it's a lot more to study on than just what seems on the surface.
Page, you know, what I was sitting here doing, I'm sitting here thinking a lot. That's why I was kind of out and fogged up a little bit about this. But, and I don't want to get into discussion about this tonight, but it seemed like we're doing one thing for the beer market, and then we might be heading down a path of something else for the liquor market. So that's just part of my thinking.
Well, no, I think what, I really feel like what we've done on the beer ordinance is really trying to straighten out something that could get us in trouble. That's why Ms. Haemecali wants to defer this, is because there's actually things in our existing ordinance that have been found, found not allowed by litigation that has happened since the, you know, in the years since it was drafted. And so I think we're fine until we go and update something. And then when we update something, we better get it right. We can't be essentially passing a law that's illegal. Or I guess it's not a law if it's illegal, right? But, you know, we can't be, we can't be putting in our code something that is not going to fly if it winds up with the right people saying you can't do that. So she just want, so I think it's two separate things. I don't think they're related at all.
I can relate them a little bit, but we'll do that at a different time.
Right.
Well, also, I wasn't here, but I was watching it through the internet. And I'd like to know more about what other cities are doing.
I can bring that back to you. If you remember the very first time it was on the agenda, I gave you comparisons of several different cities around us. But when I bring it back, I will, I'll bring that back for you.
And I don't, I don't think what we discussed is wrong. I think the difficulty for the City of Gallatin is we've had one set of rules in place for a long time. And now we're talking about changing them. And I think that.
And really, a big change.
Yeah. And it really does impact people's investments.
But really, we have three miles that the owner has to live in for the liquor store? No, not anymore. The state doesn't allow that. But it's still in our code. Okay. So, yeah, so things absolutely changed.
Is that correct, Ms. Kitchell?
I'd like to make a comment on this. This food for thought for people in the future when we develop on this. I've been in convenience store business for 45 years, and it's never had any protection whatsoever. I'm just going to give you a little list of things that's happened to the people with beer permits in convenience stores since I've been in business. Liquor stores can now have beer, but convenience stores can't have liquor. Liquors, grocery stores can have gas. This is what's happened to a convenience store. They've been able to put in the fuel pumps and beer since I've been in business. So we have competition from there. Tobacco stores, which is competition for convenience stores. I've heard over and over about the investment in a liquor store, why they invested. I'm going to give you an example right now. The guy stood up here last week and talked about his investment. He's putting a new convenience store at 25 and Airport Road. Did he have a consideration for the investment that the people up and down Hartford Pike?
But that investment wasn't, we shouldn't probably be debating this, but I see what your point is from your perspective, being in the convenience store business. But I still submit that it's quite different because it's our rules that have put them in the circumstance that they are in and enforce the large investments. It's not about free market competition. And so they have regulations around what they do each and every day that they can't diversify their sales like a convenience store can.
Market business has some regulations.
They can't, they can't, I didn't understand you.
They have regulations also.
Right, I understand. But I'm telling you that the liquor stores' regulations are more constraining because they have no opportunity to diversify their business like about any other business does.
They just did. They just got beer when they had to give up wine.
Okay, but don't they say, I'm not sure how the beer sales works, but to me, it's all alcohol. And, and, you know, it all.
And we're protecting one alcohol, but we're not the other.
Again, your sales can be very diverse, and you can have gas, and you can have a coffee shop, and you can have, I don't know, sandwiches. You have a very diverse opportunity. But what I'm saying, you're debating a free market, but I'm saying what we have at issue is that the laws of the City of Gallatin created a situation where a free market did not exist and therefore forced a much larger investment. And then someone would have had to have made it in a market where there wasn't rules in place. And that is what has, in essence, perverted our market so that if we go and change and take away all the restrictions, their investment is damaged. You know, that's not a free market issue. This is based on laws of the City of Gallatin.
You're upping a new market now. A small market is a north of $2 million investment. That's not counting the inventory. It's not counting permit. It's not counting any of the startup cost.
But I really think it's important that we kind of, you know, look at what is unique to this situation created by the rules that the City of Gallatin had in, has in place and, and try to see them through the lens in the market that they've created. I happen to have been exposed a little bit to see stores and their profit structure, and they don't compare to liquor stores at all. You know, I think liquor stores operate on a much smaller profit margin. But, so you can take a lot of different angles to compare these things, but.
You have compared it?
I, I, I said I have some knowledge, and I have some knowledge of what liquor store's profit margin is. And it was shocking to me to see what the average profit margin on liquor stores is.
Look at the amount of investment versus one versus the other.
Well, I'm, I'm not studying, and I'm not making, I think it's wrong to make it specific.
I'm just.
It would be no different than us comparing it to what.
I know what these guys struggled with all these years. And when, when they started opening tobacco stores, and you, they took part of the beer sales away, a large, a large portion of it. And they had no protection.
Yet, people are still opening them. So they're doing something that makes it work.
What?
I said, yet, people are still opening. So there's obviously a profit margin in them.
Well, I would say the same thing would happen with a liquor store.
But, but again, back to the original rules that the City of Gallatin had in place that created the investment structure whereby us changing is going to severely damage that.
Asheville had those same set of rules, and Portland did too, didn't they?
I don't know.
I'd like to know why a city the size of Hendersonville only has four, has decided to only have four.
They've actually increased their population, too.
And I'd like to know the reasoning of why.
I, I.
I think we're going to bring all that back when we talk about.
I, I, I've acquired, I mean, honestly, I don't feel good about that either. I feel like that's unfair protection of a small number of liquor stores. I don't feel like that's right either.
Very small. But I'd like to know why, why their thought process was.
And if we were in a scenario today where we were just going to have liquor stores for the first time in Gallatin, I'd absolutely be like, let it be wide open. I mean, that's what it should be. But because of the rules that existed already and the damage that will occur as the result of those rules, that's why I don't feel like it's right to just.
It sounds like any change would have to go to the Alcohol and Beer Board or whoever that is that can change any of the rules, no? Who makes it?
Our rules. It's in our code.
It's our code only.
Yeah, it is, it is.
State law just says we have to have reasonable access. That's it. That's it, reasonable. Okay.
But like I said, it is, it is far more, it is, it is far more intrinsic than is apparent on the surface. And, and it's one of these things where I had a strong opinion in the beginning, but as I learned more and had more discussions, I really shifted.
Have we voted to defer it?
Voted to defer it. Good point, Councilman Overton. Move along. Item number six, Resolution R2202-18, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution reappointing Steve Camp and Roger Machet to Gallatin Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. I so move.
Second.
Message by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? It's the Resolution R2202-18. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item seven is Resolution R2202-19, Councilwoman Love again.
Thank you. This is a resolution appointing Neil Burgess to the Gallatin Industrial Development Board. I so move.
Message by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? This is Resolution R2202-19. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item number eight is Resolution R2202-20, Councilwoman Love again.
Ditto. Thank you again.
This is a resolution appointing Neil Burgess to the Gallatin Health Educational and Housing Facilities Board. I so move.
Second. Message by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? This is Resolution R2202-20. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item number nine is Resolution R2202-21, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution approving reclassification of Attorney Officer Risk Management's position from hourly to salary, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion or any questions?
Yes, why is it that going to...
That's right, you weren't here last week. Well, I'll let you address it. Save money. Oh.
But, no. It's in, it's out of my department, and the person who's been in that position started as an hourly employee in a different position. As the position grew, she stayed in the hourly position. She's now leaving for a job in the private sector, and I believe and have believed that it's a salary position due to the level where it is and the salary. There is some, there are some nights and weekends, not a lot, but a little bit. We do have comp time, and as people leave, we have to pay out vacation and comp time. We're going to be paying that out. Whereas when a salaried person leaves, you don't pay that out.
Thank you. Anyone else? This is Resolution R2202-21. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item 10 is Resolution R2202-22, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Resolution City Gallatin Summit County Tennessee supporting restoration of historic state shared sales tax relationship and the increased single article cap revenue sharing relationship between the state of Tennessee and local government, and I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Any questions or discussion on this? Ms. Love, Ms. George, I think you guys were both gone this week. This is, um, the resolution explains a lot of it, but this goes back asking the state of Tennessee to reverse, not reverse, but, but, um, continue with what they had done prior to 2002, where they shared a certain portion of all the sales tax revenue with the cities and counties. When they raised the sales tax note two, they did not share that portion of the increase with the cities and counties, so we're asking them to do that. They also raised the single article cap from $1,600 to $3,200, so that cities, um, no, no longer got that gap between $1,600 and $3,200. Everything above that goes to the state. So, we're asking that they give us back that above $1,600 portion. So it means a sizable amount of revenue, not just to Gallatin, but to all cities and to the county. And of course, with the state having had sizable surpluses for a long period of time now, we would not be, you know, hurting their revenue stream and really bolstering ours. We've met with our legislators, um, there's been, you know, a very intense effort by the municipal league and others to see this happen, and we all feel like now is the right time for it to happen. It will help us certainly plan for our future, and as I have told the legislators that I've had the pleasure of meeting with, for us, it's really about being able to plan for the future, pay our people better, and, and stabilize and sustain our city like the state has been able to do since they started collecting this money in '02. So, that's it in a nutshell. Anyone else, questions, comments? All right, this is Resolution R2202-22. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item 11 is Resolution R2202-23, Councilman Hayes.
Is this Resolution Establishing Capital Improvement Program? Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Any questions on this? Everybody good with it? All right, Resolution R2202-23. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item 12 is Resolution R2202-24, Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution confirming the appointments of Gallatin Municipal Board of Zoning Appeals members. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. This is appointing, um, Jeanie Gregory to continue service, for Matt Harris to come on the board in place of John Poirier, and Sierra Coleman coming on the board as well. So the entire board from this point, well, actually, once Mr. Harris come on board, will be Drew Schreiner, Jeanie Gregory, Jimmy Moore, Matt Harris, and Sierra Coleman. So, um, Sierra Coleman, I think that's a Coleman. With that, all in favor of Resolution R2202-24, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Item number 13 is Resolution R2202-25, Councilman Fan.
This is a resolution supporting of the city of Gallatin's application for the 2022 Home Grant Program submitted to the Tennessee Housing Development Agency. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander. Any questions, discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not quite sure what that means.
The, the home repair, Mr. McCord may want to address this further, but the home repair program is a grant that comes down, um, that local communities can minister, where we can help people who have homes at a certain level of disrepair. We can provide monies for those repairs so that they can oftentimes stay in their home or prevent further deterioration of a structure, um, so that it winds up on our, you know...
Who decides who those homes are or...
Well, they apply.
Okay.
And they have to meet criteria, and then I don't know who, what, who, how, how is it judged or whatever, Mr. McCord? Evaluated, judged might not be the best word.
McCord, city planner, they have an inspection, so the homes are inspected, and if they're too dilapidated, meaning they don't want to invest funds in them, they're not qualified. So, the inspector would make the determination as to whether or not they're in a state of repair that, that make them eligible for that. So, it is very competitive, so there will be some that won't be chosen, so that it'd be based on what the inspector believes is the most...
You have a number?
And then, and you have to qualify as well. There's an income range, so. We did six or so, I think, our last round that we did.
Is that in a year?
Uh, it took more than a year. There were some delays, but, uh, there were about six houses that were done throughout So they, there's things like lead bank, uh, lead paint inspections that, you know, kind of eat away literally at the funds, and, uh, that's part of the rehabilitation of the home if it's necessary. Okay.
Anyone else with questions? This is Resolution R2202-25. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda this evening, and brings us now to other business, so I'd ask if any member of this council has other business to bring forward.
I have one thing.
Okay.
Just wanted to compliment Chief Bannon for that Black History thing that you put on about police officer. It brought back some memories, because I forgot about, you know, Mr. Jimmy Young and Mr. Tom Odom, people of the past, and I really appreciate it, and so I was very excited when I accidentally, because I don't do Facebook and all that stuff everywhere, but I stumbled upon that and saw that, so I, I was very thankful and excited for you to recognize the, uh, black officers. Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Well, they've done a beautiful job. Had old Tank Rowan on there, and all them guys, you know, just brought back memories.
Seeing no one, we'll move on now to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting that anyone's not on the, um, any item that's not on the agenda may be addressed to the public. Again, we ask that you come to the podium, give us your name, share your address with us, and you will have five minutes to speak.
My name is Bob Maola. I live at 425 Paisley Way, Gallatin, Tennessee. Been a resident for five years, and I've lived in Tennessee for 35. Business owner, worked in the construction area. I have just one comment. Last week, you did not say to pledge. You did not say a prayer. Now, I, someone told me in the back, there's reasons you do and don't. At the American Legion, we say it all the time. When the legion is done, we say a prayer at the end. I don't know why that this is a political outfit here, that you disrespect your neighbors in Gallatin, and not say the pledge of allegiance every time, and not say a prayer, especially a prayer, when every decision you make puts a burden on your next-door neighbor or your neighbor across the street, when that person has to go out to bust their moons to make a living. Ask God, am I making this right decision? Am I doing the right thing? Or am I helping Joe Blow at the country club? Or am I helping my friend that I went to high school with? These are things that you have to think about. And also, one just last thing. You bragged about helping the police department with the gun range. I had a construction cleaning business for 25, 30 years. If I heard someone say they were working on something for five years, and all they got done was digging some dirt, that's disrespecting that man right there. And you say you, 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 you're for the police department and fire department? It's a disgrace. How you could go home, how you could save, when you have a police officer driving on, down a Gallatin rural road at 2:00 in the morning, and he stops, some kids in the car, tinted glass, and has to make a stop? And there's a gunfire? I'm going to tell you something that bite of my heart, like across this country, I don't think you folks would back that police officer. I think you would, first thing you'd go for, votes. And I'm telling you, and I'm putting it on record right now, I would give my life to a police officer if I saw him on the road. I've given my blood once for this country, and I'd do it again. That's how I feel about what you're doing to our police department and our fire department. Think about it, please. You know, you're, you're passing stuff here, back and forth, it's, it's shuffling papers here and there. I tell my neighbors about this, they, they don't believe it. They don't believe we don't have a gun range. We don't have a facility for our fire department. It's a disgrace. They didn't know that. And then tell them it takes two years to get a transformer? I'd call the electric department. You know what they told me? And I don't want to give any names, because I know you guys would get them fired. They says, "You guys don't know what you're doing." Listen, listen to me. I know what you're going to say.
No debate, public comment.
Just a comment. I'm, this is what they're telling me. They know what transform, transformers to get. You guys have to make a decision. And why it takes five years, if you were working on this for five years, why does it take five years? You should have had it in already. You know why? It's like when Trump put that ice skating rink in New York City.
Let's go in, let's not start talking about under public...
But that's what it, no, it's private business as opposed to government building something. Two different things. Make a bid, get the bid, make a decision, and get it done. Thank you.
And I will comment because, um, there, there's a lot of, um, I, I, I am, I'll be offended on behalf of this council, because...
No debating.
I, I'm not debating, I'm just making a comment. Um, I think that, um, I certainly have more faith in this council, and I think our police department and fire department do as well, and they know we have their backs and appreciate them every single day. And I think we all wish things moved as quickly in government as they do in the private sector, but unfortunately, we have a lot more regulations than the private sector. With that, I'll make no further comment. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? Ms. Baker.
You go ahead. No, 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 you go ahead. First lady's going to call.
Good evening, I'm Kim Baker. I reside at 366 Woodlands Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. But I'm here tonight on behalf of the chamber, yes, I have things. And then these are for up there. What the mayor and bill are actually handing out at the time is this chamber's new city guide. The theme is based on Gallatin's agricultural roots, and the title of the book is Rooted in Grit, Growing with Grace. So we hope you will enjoy that for those that are watching or hear and would like when we have them available at the chamber office. So, um, I think you'll enjoy that. It's a lifestyle publication in the front and a city guide in the back. That is not why I'm here, though, and this isn't why I'm here either, but, um, I did want to say that our leadership Gallatin class, we're in our third leadership Gallatin class, and last week, we had 20 of those class members who were able to tour all over the city and interact with different departments, including our fabulous police department and fire department, public works, engineering. They met with the mayor, and they met with a couple council members, members as well. And they thoroughly enjoyed their time and showcased our city so well. So thank you to, thank you to all of you who helped us make that day possible. We really appreciate you. The reason I'm here this evening is the Gallatin Shamrock Run is coming up on Saturday, March 12th. It again is taking place in and around downtown Gallatin. The route is the same as it has been in years past. It'll start and end, if you give me permission to do so, in the city hall parking lot. It'll wrap through the historic commercial district as well as a little bit of the historic residential district, really showcasing our city well. My ask this evening is that we could have permission to use the city hall parking lot from 5:00 a.m. to about 9:30 a.m. on Saturday, March 12th, so.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Overton, second by Councilwoman George. Is there any discussion, any questions?
And the Shamrock Run money does go to a very worthy cause for the Chamber Foundation.
Thank you.
Chamber Foundation supports education in our city.
Yes, it funds innovative enhancement projects in our Gallatin K-12 public schools. Um, and then last year, we started giving out the James B. Hawkins Good Neighbor Scholarship, honoring the late Jim Hawkins, and we give those to graduating seniors at Gallatin High School and Station Camp, and maybe in the future Liberty Creek, if that becomes a Gallatin school. Thank you. I do have information about the Shamrock Run. We are still accepting runners, sponsors, and volunteers, so I'll let Connie pass these over.
Mayor, let me disclose before we vote that I am chairman of the foundation. I don't get a penny off of it, but I just want to disclose that, thank you.
I am on the foundation board.
All in favor of approving the, um, parking lot closure, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. I think the streets are already approved each year, correct? I do want to say, since you're standing up there, I heard from somebody sitting up here, what a great job you did in the rest of your presentation yesterday. I only got to see the first 35 minutes or so, so.
It was excellent.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate y'all, and I appreciate, um, your feedback and all you do. Thank you.
We appreciate you. Thank you. All right, anyone else? We should speak under public comment.
Good evening, council, and folks in the audience. My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at 10007 Hart Street here in Gallatin. I rise today to express my appreciation for the wonderful reports that were given to us last week by the Airport Commission, and the, uh, wonderful work that our dear friend Rosemary Bates has done with regard to the project out there, the, uh, firing range, et cetera. Uh, it was a little long. I think we need to look at our, our, uh, opportunities for the future, that, uh, an hour's about all we can handle, because we have to get up and go do something else. That's our first issue. I know, I know how that works. But my point tonight is this. There was a couple of, of items that came up about a facility for us to have a meeting in, and, uh, at the same time, we were also working with the Recreation Department and the usage of facilities. I would submit to this august board that we've already got a building for us to use as a meeting facility. Now, I understand that the police department wants to have a place where they can have all their audio visuals and all that good stuff together for their training program. And I'm going to back the chief on that totally, because, and we have people come into our community to be trained, and he will bring other people in here to be trained, because every police department can't do what we can do. every police department can't do what we can do. We can train people in, in whatever it may be, firearms, Miranda rights, whatever it might be. And the chief and his staff can do that for us, and at the same time, we get quality people to do that for us here in Gallatin and also train people outside of Gallatin. That's a plus for our city, absolutely. And I wanted to back the chief on that, and I think that we can use Langley Hall, clean it up, fix it up until these other buildings are built. It's sitting out there, not doing a dang thing. Nobody's touched it with a 10-foot pole. So we do have something to work with. So let's use what we have. It's like the good old country boy says, you use what you got. And that's the end of my story. Have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? We should speak under public comment on non-agenda-related items. And now, I entertain a motion. Motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, have a safe trip going home. Take care of yourselves, be kind to one another. Good night.